Mr. Leitner? Mr. Walls? Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Duckham? Mr. Alexander? Commissioner Mahoney? Mr. Plachek? Commissioner Elwell? Chairman Chatwell?
Thank you. First opportunity for public comment. This is five minutes. Please identify yourself and speak to the board. No questions will be answered from the board.
I'm Peter Bormuth. I wanted to address, once again, the use of herbicide on county park properties. We're talking Sparks, the pond, and also the resolution that allowed its usage at Clark Lake. I sent Adam a list of the ingredients in the herbicides that were provided to me, the list that you're using, and a list of their negative effects. And there are many. And the herbicides you're using are toxic to some aquatic life. There's also human carcinogen. I just would request, once again, that the administration and the people sitting on this commission not add herbicides and carcinogens to our environment. Whatever you put in the environment ends up in your own cells. And there is only one cure for the cancer that afflicts our nation, and that is removing carcinogens from our environment. Twenty-five percent of our nation, twenty-five percent, one-fourth of our people, die of some form of cancer. And yet we continue to add carcinogens to our environment and then look for other cures for cancer. There are none.
Any other public comment?
Todd Britt and Leonie Township just wanted to let everybody know that supposed to be in a little bit of negotiations today. I didn't know it wasn't going to be on the agenda for sure, but it's on the Southern Regional Interceptor. I'm meeting with John Tellis this morning here at the county building. But hopefully, we can come to a compromise between the townships before the 21st. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Seeing none, Administrator Overton, would you talk about the tower parking lot?
Good morning. Thank you. I did realize, looking at the packet this morning, that you guys do not have the map. So I'd like to pass out the, I shouldn't say the map, I guess it's the rendering, the drawing of the parking lot. What you'll see on the first page is, what you'll see on the first page is the existing lot. And of course, the second page is what's proposed. Of course, we're not looking for action today, but I did want to walk you through a little bit what is, what we believe is some of the challenges and concerns that we have, although we are ultimately recommending what has been proposed. And you'll see, first looking at our lot, you'll see in our lot here, obviously, the most obvious problem is we have three cars deep, so the middle row is kind of locked in. You know, you have to jockey cars around to get in and out. Otherwise, though, it does work, has worked for some time, and while inconvenient, we do manage to put all our cars in there. Now, looking at what's proposed, the city, and of course, as you know, the city has upgraded their parking ordinances, and you've read about and heard some complaints, I know I have, over the last few years about it. Their ordinance, what I would say is, well, it's not necessarily unusual, in the sense that most cities that have parking lot construction ordinances have something similar, as far as trying to break up the sea of asphalt, create some green space, you know, create some more water-permeable spaces in a parking lot, instead of having a downtown sea of cement and asphalt. And you can see these bump outs in this second one here, those are going to be green spaces. They're going to put grass presumably in there. On the west side, they plan to put, you see that curb in there, they plan to turn that alley that we currently use for a driveway into a pedestrian-only access. Well, pedestrian and deliveries. The word has been pedestrian, but when pressed a little more on it, it became apparent that there will still yet be deliveries, delivery trucks coming down that alley. It's just, you know, the frequency of that is minimal. But that does preclude us from pulling out into the alley if they put a curb down along that way. And when you look at the other side, the east side, which is the alley over here adjacent to the theater, they're proposing that we enter our lot there, removing our Pearl Street entrance and adding more diagonal parking, which is true. They do pick up some parking spaces there. Frankly, I was a little concerned about the turning radiuses on this, and they've assured me that they're all good engineering-wise, that the trucks can still come back and through the alley and so forth. As far as the dumpster, it doesn't really show it here, but the dumpster, as planned, is to be located right on the end of where the generator is. So think of where the generator is. So the truck would come, either pull or back down the alley, and the dumpster would be right there. Now, some have said, "Well, why do we want to participate? Why do we want to do any of this?" And frankly, you know, there's mixed feelings about it. I would first say that our parking lot is not ideal by any means. It does create problems. Although, it does maximize the amount of parking we can get in there. You know, I mean, literally, almost as maximum as you can get without having valet. But at the same time, the city, if they do, regardless of whether we participate or not, the city is going to go ahead and do what they want to do to the east, west side, west side, now that, which would preclude us, we'd lose a whole row of parking there, because we can't pull out, have people be pulling out into a pedestrian-only, or, oh, well, there'll be a curb there to begin with. The east side, that island they show there, my take on that is that's actually in our space, and they can't do that unless we permit it. Again, it's give and take. We do lose parking in our lot. However, the city, and part of the agreement is, for the next 10 years, the city makes us whole by giving us parking tags to allow our employees to park basically across the street in the farmer's market parking lot there. So most of them come in early, they would be parked there. And then there'll be a few other tags for miscellaneous folks, commissioners and folks coming and going from the building. Questions, concerns, or otherwise?
I'm not sure what our options are here on this. It don't sound like we have a lot. But, you know, if we're trying to develop the downtown, it don't make much sense to take away parking places. Especially the amount of traffic that goes through our parking lots. It's going to be a major inconvenience. But as I say, you know, it's going to look pretty, but who's going to come downtown if you can't find a place to park and by losing all these parking places? It don't make much sense.
Pardon me? I was going to say, while we, the county, lose lot space in our lot, the total parking downtown will be a gain. Their plan shows that they're gaining spaces. They pick quite a few on the street by changing some of these alley configurations and so forth. So while I agree with you, but for us in particular, it's a loss in our lot, but overall, the system has gaining parking spaces, so I'm told.
Mike, looking at the second page, the new map, you say that we don't have to do on the, within our lot, what they're suggesting here, or we do. There's car vaults there that we're losing a space on each row, it looks like.
Yeah, the, no, they can't force us, at this point, to do anything inside our lot. I would tell you that on the west side there, that bump out there is a little exaggerated in this drawing. I did have that conversation with them. I said, "You know, that's too much. Why should we lose those additional four spaces?" And their response, of course, is they're making them up to us. However, I'm like, "But we really do not need that extra space in addition to the alley, especially for a pedestrian-type alley." So they have moved that over a space, so what you see there is not exactly accurate. There'll probably be a four, as they're drawing it up, there'll be four more spaces on that end.
Well, it looks in the drawing like they're using our parking lot to make the aesthetics look better, what it looks like on the drawing to me, but...
I would agree with that. When you, like, especially over, well, the way it's drawn there on the west side, but on the east side, that little island thing there, that's definitely, part of that's in our lot, for sure, there.
Yeah.
And while, and while we, they can't force us to do that type of thing, part of the challenge on this is, the reason I believe this is in our best interest ultimately at this point, is we can say, "No, we're not, we're not going to do this," and they will do what they can do, and that is, you know, put their curbs in, which ultimately, we will lose at least 15 spots with no replacement. It'll be on our dime to replace those spots. We can go to court and spend a lot of money on that, too. Questionable whether we would prevail in that or not. And ultimately, though, they have an ordinance, the city does. We are within the city's boundaries. And when that lot has to be replaced, we would have to meet the requirements of the ordinance, and our existing lot does not. So we can keep patching potholes in our parking lot and get away with it, but eventually, we'll have to rebuild the lot. And at that time, we have to get a permit from the city, and our whole lot will change. We will lose 25 spaces on our dime. This way here, granted, it's sooner than we would have otherwise done it, but it does, I think it's, I think it's the best option, given the set of options.
What happens in 10 years when the agreement's gone on the additional parking spaces?
Frankly, my best guess is we'll be paying for parking. That's, I mean, that's my best guess. I would obviously try to, you'd want to negotiate something more than that, better than that, but the reality is, the contract does not say that they have to give us continued free parking. I know they don't give, they only give their own employees free parking. Their employees pay for parking. So it's unlikely they would give it to us.
Part of the agreement, if I read it, or what's in the agreement, is that they have access to our lot after hours then to use as municipal parking?
Yes. The idea is that we would open our lot up after 5:00. Probably till, it's not installed yet, but I would think, you know, until at least probably 2:00 a.m. or something like that, when the restaurants and bars closes around us.
Is there an actual written agreement that you have that we could see?
We do. You'll have it, it should be, well, it's pretty much done. Brad, Phil Curtis's firm has it. They were just working on some liability issues between the city's attorney and our attorney on that. But the fundamentals are all there.
And this will be approved by what, the full board or committee?
Full board. So it'll come to committee, you'll have it with the agreement in hand, and then, of course, committee can review it, and then it'll go on to full board.
So one of my, one of my questions was just answered. So, excuse me. 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., the entire lot, our entire lot, north of us here, belongs simply to the county. And then at 5:00 p.m., it becomes a, more or less, a city or a public lot to be used. So then, my question would be regarding the memo states that we have in our Board docs packet. The remaining 14 will be parking in a municipal parking lot, number five, by the farmer's market, from the hours 6:00 a.m. to 5:00. But the diagram is not 14 spots. Is that correct? Letter J.
The diagram, they don't show the off-site parking.
Correct. This says 11, park anywhere tags, 14, parking in lot number five spots. Okay. So this diagram here does not show?
No. That would be the other side of Pearl Street.
Correct. That's what I'm looking, the other side of Pearl Street. So then the question, so then... Okay. So my question is, during the day, from the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., if the county is taking those city lots away from the city residents and visitors, is that going to create a hardship for those that are using, needing parking in that area? I understand it's for the betterment of the county, because, to make this work.
According to the city's determination, no. And it's not going to create a hardship.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So I would take it, then, that weekends would be, weekends would be completely open to anybody parking? That's all right. This is about the third time you've done that this morning. So weekends would be completely open to parking at any time, then?
Yes.
Okay. And then, who would have the law enforcement responsibilities? Somebody decides to stay in an establishment real late, and the vehicle's still there, and we're coming, when you're coming to work, or we're coming here for a meeting, who has the responsibility of towing, that type of thing? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing and hearing no additional questions, this will come to committee. You'll have opportunity there, as well as full board for further consideration. Thank you. Next up, we have Lifeways. Mary Beth, please. And she's going to speak to a bond.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to talk about the capital bond request that we've been talking about for some time now, about the needs for Lifeways has, and the need for us to move in that direction to be able to address some capital improvements. Currently, Lifeways roof is beyond its life expectancy, and we actually have areas in which there's water coming in. So we've done work on getting the estimates related to that repair. We also have two of our five adult foster group homes that Lifeways is purchasing with a bond that are also in need of roof repair. And the other need for the capital improvement is related to the fact that in 2014, as you might recall, in January of last year, we shifted our business model related to regionalizing with 12 other CMHs within a region, that we are no longer the prepaid inpatient health plan, which is the managed care function of delivery of behavioral health services. So we are a community mental health, and we've shifted our model, and we are providing more direct service. With that change, our current area related to the front where people enter into Lifeways is no longer conducive to a service delivery model related to when it was a managed care type function. So we need to have some remodeling done to that front entrance of the building so that it is conducive to individuals coming in for service delivery. I know that part of the question was related to how is the funding related to this bond going to be covered? What you need to know from a community mental health perspective, and what we're allowed, is that the depreciation of the capital improvement is an allowable expense with Medicaid and general fund dollars. So, and what we are looking at is a 20-year bond, so that over the course of that 20-year depreciation of that asset, it will be covered under our Medicaid and our general fund expense funding. I know that that was one of the questions that I had heard was needed to be answered. So I don't know if anybody else has additional questions?
Additional questions, commissioners? Phil?
20 years is an awfully long time to be dependent upon the government maintaining your budget. What happens if your Medicaid and that type funding gets reduced?
Well, I mean, this is backed by the county, so it would fall on the county, I would assume, related to that, but I don't anticipate that that's going to happen. Medicaid, if anything, if you look at our funding over the last several years, and last month, I did present the, our audit that did show that over the course of the last several years, we've seen an increase in Medicaid funding, especially in light of Healthy Michigan, that's expanded. Additional Medicaid, Medicaid funding is not an issue. It's more of the state general fund dollars that we've seen a decrease in funding.
However, one day here soon, the Chinese may get tired of giving us money. And then we're going to have our federal budget in trouble.
Right. I understand that, and the other challenge is, we have a building that's having water come in, and we don't, we have no other availability of getting funding to make that, those improvements. You cannot use Medicaid dollars to do that. You can only use Medicaid dollars through the depreciation of the asset to pay for that expense.
There is a possibility, the next 20 years, the county would have to pick up the tab and back this bond.
If I may jump in there?
Yes.
There's always that possibility. The county does, you know, building, we own that property. And I guess the question for me is, which is less costly, to repair the roof now or to patch the roof as it goes? And as you, as we all know, eventually, there's going to be more holes than we have buckets, and it'll cost a lot more then. We're on the hook either way. We're in the mental health business. Unless the state dramatically changes the model, the funding for this is available. Either way, we're on the hook for this. So I think it's, at this point, money well spent, given the state of affairs with some of the roofs being questioned. Yes, sir?
Mary Beth, you've had noted replacement of a generator or install a generator?
Oh, yes, that as well.
Is it where there is no generator now, or is it replacing a current one? And is it at the main facility?
It's at the main facility. It's not at the group homes, and it's, the one that we had in place is not operating.
Okay. And then you've mentioned group homes, and it looks like it's two group homes in the document. Are those group homes that you've just recently acquired, or that we've had for some time?
No. They're homes that we are also purchasing with the bond, with the county. We have five group homes, actually. The other three homes, their roofs are still covered under the warranty. It's not, they're not needing repair.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Just another factor to this whole thing, our Director of Fleet and Facilities, Rick Shealy, has gone over this quite thoroughly. He's brought, he's brought people in who actually are expertise in these various areas, and he has determined what, he has determined what the need is. So that's one factor that we certainly should take in consideration, that he has recommended this. And also, you know, the, again, these are county facilities, and the fact is that we do serve the mental health community. And, and obviously, there's always a risk that the money wouldn't be there, and we put ourselves in a position, again, of being the ones, if you will, are the cosigners. But this is certainly something necessary. And we also have a very good opportunity with this money to potentially have what the 24-hour, seven-day-a-week access center at the front of Lifeways, which would be a tremendous asset to our community. So from my perspective, this is, this is money well spent, which, of course, well bonded, let's put it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional, additional questions? Anyone? John?
Michael, and I'm not sure who I need to ask for this, but what I'd like to see is a breakdown of the cost of the roof for the Lifeways building versus the group homes versus the generator and the construction area. And that's not in our packet.
No, that's, that's not. But that can be made available for...
I can definitely make that available for the Personnel and Finance Committee. I will send that on to Adam.
Mike, so the plan sounds like Personnel and Finance Monday, and then full board the week after.
No?
No, there's a timeline in here. You can see it doesn't come to August 10th.
I was going to say, there's necessarily some reason we're delaying on...
Yeah, there's a consideration of notice. You've got to follow the timeline.
A 45-day notice.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, 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 that's true.
Okay. So it'll be at which Personnel and Finance Committee this coming Monday still or not?
The, it will be, because there's a notice of intent. The board has to approve at the 21st, Tuesday night. So the notice of intent is what, to move forward on the bond is what we have to approve. Questions, Julie?
So Mary Beth, for clarification, there are a total of five adult foster care group homes in Jackson County?
Well, there's more, but there's five that are being purchased by Lifeways through a bond with the county. That's correct.
So how many other total?
Group homes?
Yes. In Jackson County?
Oh, I couldn't even, because people, many, because people own them individually, privately.
But that we own?
Right. That's correct. There are five that are being purchased with a bond that are actually, until Lifeways pays off the bond, they're actually the county. So there's five of them, yes. Five group homes.
Other questions, concerns? Seeing, hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Up next, we have Act 51 report. Christopher?
Good morning. Nothing like spending an early morning looking at financial figures and reports. But much in the fashion of doing your income tax return and what we're familiar with with 1040 forms, we're just basically going to cover the first couple of, basically first seven pages of the report. Do you all happen to have a copy of the report up on your screens? I'll give you a page number reference and then a line number. So just try to track with me, and I'll just hit a few highlights. So try to keep it to about five minutes, and then be happy to answer any questions you have. So passing by the cover page, let's go to page one. And by the way, this report is, is required by the state as a part of our, every county agency has to file. In fact, every agency who receives Act 51 has to file this report annually. And we do this in concert with the audit report, so that we make sure everything's accurate to the best of our ability. So first of all, page one, line two, I just want to highlight that our investments from last year, this is line two, you see a figure of $2,097,000. This is $800,000 lower than in 2013, and that's primarily because of $500,000 more inventory that we had on hand. And that inventory includes stone, road materials, as well as just truck parts and various items. So going to lines 3A through 3F, you see accounts receivable. Those are bills owing to us at the year end.
Christopher?
Yes, sorry.
We're going to take questions as we go, as they pop up. Please, thanks.
Sure. Sorry about that.
That fine, as we go?
Most certainly.
On the investments, my question is, what are we overall, what are we overall investing in?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Because, you know, that's over two minutes.
Jim may know. Jim may know, yes.
Yeah, that's, what you see there is simply the JDOT's portion of the treasurer's pooled cash account. So the investments included there would be whatever the treasurer's invested in, which is CDs. I think there's some federal home loan, bank notes in there and so forth. So the $2 million you see there is simply lumped into approximately $50 million of investments that the treasurer's involved with.
Right. The short answer is CDs, which I do know that, but I thought you meant specifics, like where exactly the money was. But we could get that detail if you needed it.
No, well, actually, CDs is one. No, well, actually, CDs is one, I was wondering if that might be one of the ones that you were going to mention.
We're very limited on where we can put the money.
But that's what's another question I asked, because of where this, where this money comes from. I just, I guess I wasn't aware that we could invest in CDs. Obviously, we can.
That's the primary instrument, actually, other than just cash, to try to pool it into CDs to collect some kind of an interest rate on it.
Okay.
Some kind of return.
All right, thank you.
We actually here in Jackson have a pretty healthy cash balance for an agency our size. I like to see a figure of about that in reserves at year end, so that's not the case in Calhoun. We're in the process of trying to rebuild there. They've, they've literally ended the year at about $100,000, not two or three million, so. So moving on to accounts receivable, lines 3A through 3F, I just wanna point out a couple of these because they are fairly large. Every year, you'll see, at least on line 3A, a fairly large number. And that's because we're about two months behind on the Act 51 receipts from the state. So the 1.695 million you see are basically the January and February funds that we will receive after the year closes out. Line 3F is sundry accounts receivable, includes $500,000 to be received in 2015, which is shown as deferred revenue on the subsequent page, page two, line 17. So just wanted to point out those items. Moving on to page three, if you scroll down. I have about eight items, and we're through about the third one, so. Line 28A is where I'm going on page three. Equipment, road, road equipment. We, we have aging equipment, no secret. You can see it visually, and we feel, we feel the pain, especially in the middle of storm events, when we have trucks down. What you see here, though, is total valuation in column A on line 28 is 14.6 million. We are now down to, in column B, we show the less accumulated depreciation of only about 10% of the overall net valuation. So the net book value of only 10% means basically that our depreciation is running out on the equipment. And that will have some adverse effects on the financial reporting here. And what it also means is that our operating expenses are climbing rapidly. The repairs, motor rebuilds, transmission rebuilds, and so forth. And frankly, downtime, when we have people on staff in the middle of storm events and they're waiting around for their truck to be fixed and so forth. So this line is diminishing quickly.
Chris?
Yes.
Down there. Left.
Yeah, there you are.
Chris, back on page two, line 14 under liabilities, it's 340,000. Can you give me an example of what that is, advances?
Line 14, advances. Liability. I don't know offhand. There's a lot of details in rocket science to this, but I can get back to you on that. I would assume that it would be vendor advances and so forth on purchases, on inventory and so forth. Jim, do you know offhand?
No, I don't.
Yeah, I'll check on that. There are very strict rules on what funds go where and so forth, so I will get an answer on that. I've marked it. So we left off on line 28A. I just wanna highlight also line 20, 33, excuse me. Similarly, we talked about equipment on line 28. If you go to 33, the value of our infrastructure in Jackson County is at $107 million. And this is per GASB 34 requirements from a few years ago. We now have to report a value of all of our streets, roads, bridges, and infrastructure, and then we have to depreciate it each year. So you'll see now that we're at a net valuation, a net book value, so to speak, of 68.8 million. As you invest in projects, that number goes up, and so it kinda just stabilizes. If you're not investing in your infrastructure, you'll see it decline, just like we do in equipment. So it's nice to see that kinda levelized or even climbing over time. When you do a $100,000 street project, it basically adds $100,000 in value in column A. And then each year, we depreciate it down over its life cycle. So it's basically an indication, if you think about your personal finances, your home mortgage and your car, things may be paid for, but if your car is very old and not running well and fully depreciated, so to speak, you'll see that, that value very low in column B. So moving on to page four. Line 61. This is our total MTF receipts, which is our major revenue stream. We've talked about this before. You can see that it's split amongst several categories. We have line 57, which is the engineering allocation. We have snow removal. We have urban road. Snow removal, by the way, is mostly northern counties. We don't get a special snow removal allocation here in the southern tier of the state. Then it's split between urban roads and then just a general allocation for the totals that you see representing 10.8 million to the far right. That figure has been about the same over the last decade, as you might recall from a prior study session, educational piece I did back in January. And we'll cover that again when we talk in August. So moving down to line 63, second to last item I just wanna highlight is you'll see other revenues. You might be curious where the 2.1 million came from. You'll see it's all in the primary road fund. That was the special allocation from the state. We had 990,000 in the triple R funds. And then we had other special funding allocations from the winter emergency funds of 668,000, and then we had state special funds of 495,000. You'll also see in some lines, some large revenue items. When we get a federal or a state grant, it's basically passed through funds. Shows up on our books, but we never actually touch the money, if that makes sense. So when we're doing a project funded by a rural task force monies, basically, we submit the pay request to MDOT, and they cut the checks directly. But it has to show up on our books as pass-through funds. So while our total revenues are up in the 19 to 20 million dollar range, it's basically inflated because of those, those pass-throughs. So lastly, and this is kinda the heart of the whole report, if we go to page seven. This is how we've done from years prior to this year, the statement of changes in fund balances. And every time you open one of these in the future, if you really wanna know the bottom line, you can cut to the chase and go to page seven, essentially. You'll see here three columns. We have a primary road fund, a local road fund, the county road commission fund, and then the total fund. None of these balances at the bottom line, line 140, can be negative by law. And if they are, we have to submit an action plan to the state for approval if we have a deficit in any one of those categories. It's customary to try to zero out your local road fund and even your primary road fund. So you'll often see those at zero or close to zero. It's very difficult to get funds into the county road commission fund, which is basically funds available for any purpose you want. So when you think about the catch-all, where you really want your money strategically is in that county road commission fund. And it takes time to build that up. So we're very healthy. It's a real tribute to the past administration out at the road commission and, and their financial strategies. This is one of the healthiest county road commission fund balances I've seen, actually. So we're in good shape. We've got the money right where we need it to be. It gives us a lot of flexibility. So when you look at line 132, 132A, you'll see we moved 749,000 from the primary road fund over to the local road fund. Oftentimes, you'll hear me speak to the fact that we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. Our primary roads are suffering because we are taking so much money out of the primary road fund allocation from the state and moving it over to subsidize our local road program. As you all know, we, we require 30%, we provide a 30% match to townships. We require 70% match from townships. To stop this bleeding, so to speak, this Peter to Paul problem, many counties have gone to a 0% match for townships, which is harsh. But Lenawee County is there, Allegan County's been there for years, and, and several counties are looking at it seriously. If the state were to fix our funding situation, we could actually keep and maintain this transfer or even increase it. But there'll still always be at least a 50% requirement from townships. Yes?
So you're telling me in Lenawee County, if a township needs a secondary road fix, they have to pay the whole thing?
They do.
Jackson County, they have to pay 70%?
70%.
And that's dictated by Act 51?
Act 51 says 50% minimum. So Lenawee said, years ago, I think they were there, everybody was kinda there, it was half and half, because Act 51 is, from 1951, it is an old law. Many counties have slowly staggered it up to 640, 70, 30, 80, 20, 90, 10. When I was managing Cass County, we had to make the hard decision to go to a 90-10 program with 90% match from townships. I think in Allegan County's case, it's, it's 100% of construction cost, but the road commission has decided to provide the engineering and the project support. So they, there is technically a match in, in project management, but, and that may be the case in Lenawee as well. I'll be meeting with their manager to talk about this here in the next few days.
But the burden falls primarily on the townships and...
It does. At least half, per state law. And so this is where there's really a policy discussion issue in Lansing.
Thank you.
Yes.
Chris, speaking to that, on the Act 51 funds, the SDP funds that, that you receive, which, which in essence, I guess in this case, is up to your, and I guess us as a board's discretion, not, I'm not saying that's something that's going to happen, but we could change the structure of things, because quite frankly, we can use, we can use half of that Act 51 money towards local roads if we, if we deem that something we wanted to do, correct?
Yes, if the funds were there, we could certainly do that.
Well, no. It's my understanding is that whatever money we get for the SDP funds through Act 51, we can use up to 50% of that on local roads if that's what we deem we wanted to do. Not whether or not it's there, we could, we have, by statute, we can use that money. The reason I bring that up is because I know Pacer ratings are being done in our local neighborhoods, and I'm gonna be very interested to see what those Pacer ratings show in our local neighborhoods. I just, for me, I just think it's something that we need to look at a little bit closer because, I mean, I understand your statement, if the money's there, but the reality is, the money is there, at least at 50%, if there was a decision to use 50% on local roads, we could do that, correct?
Yes, as long as we can financially make it work. Because remember, I cannot have a negative balance on any of my funds, so.
Okay, and then my next question is, if you look at your fund balance and you look at your budget, I mean, what are we looking at, roughly a 30% fund balance?
For year end, you mean?
Correct.
Each year, the budget fluctuates because of those pass-through funds.
I understand.
The rule of thumb, though, is to try to have between 30 and 50% of your MTF receipts. So again, we're very healthy, at 5 million, our MTF receipts are at the 10.8 million. So we're fortunate to have had, I mean, our building is paid for, we're virtually debt-free at this point. I think we have very small, $40,000 roughly in debt, so.
Okay. I just, I just wonder what, at what point do we decide, instead of that money sitting there, to actually utilize it on our roads? Obviously, you gotta have a fund balance, don't get me wrong, but I wonder, you know, do we go up to 30%, 40%? I mean, at some point, I would think, would it be better served to put that into our public roads?
I can tell you honestly, Carl, that it's, it's a drop in the bucket of the overall liability. One of the things we're doing right now, as we complete those Pacer ratings, and they are done, actually, for local roads, we're in the process of going township by township, all 19 of them, and creating capital plans for them. We will have numbers of what the overall investment that is needed on their road system, both local and then for us, for primaries. And we'll have some sticker shock to deal with, but if we truly want a great road system, or at least a good road system, we'll be showing those tiers of what that'll cost per year, ongoing, holistically, you know, just looking holistically. Because if I could take a one-time $3 million withdrawal and draw our cash reserves down, we could fix a few things, but what do you do the next year, and the next year, and the next year? Because you've basically, you know, taken from your savings, so to speak, so.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Jim.
I can make additional comment. When you see the fund balance of $5 million, not all of the $5 million is spendable. The audit report will show that a portion of that, 1.7 million, is tied up in inventory and so forth. So, and also, you have part of the fund balance that's really tied up in your net assets. So in terms of, I just wanted to clarify, in terms of what you have to spend on local funds, local roads, it's not 5 million, it's significantly less.
About 2 million is all we have in cash, per se. So that 2 million is what I like to use as a rule of thumb, you know, is 20, 25% of your MTF receiving. The fund balance, 30 to 50%, but the cash receipts, you want about the 20%. Rule of thumb is about six months' worth of, three to six months' worth of your MTF receipts should be in the bank. So that's where 2 million is right on target at a healthy level. So to spend that down is dangerous, because it's hard to get it back. So, I mean, we have to make payroll. We have, sometimes we get large shipments of stone, road materials, asphalt, we've got to cut some very large checks, and so those cash reserves are very important. And they actually float well below 2 million at certain points during the year. So in Calhoun's case, they, they use literally a million-plus-dollar line of credit to pay the bills, because they're dropping below zero frequently, especially towards year end. We're gonna change that. We're on an aggressive plan to change that for them. But, so I hope that helps to answer the question. We're at right where we need to be with our fund balance and our cash reserves, so that's a good thing. So to try to think we should pull from that, I think, to be honest, is shortsighted. We have to look at an overall plan. And hopefully Lansing will help us, so.
I may chime in just briefly, too. I would just add that I think that conversation is a, is a healthy conversation to have ultimately. How much money do we set aside? There is a break-even point analysis that can be done far as short-term borrowing, you know, from the county perspective, if you will. You know, some counties do tax anticipation notes at the end of the year, because their fund balance is too low. And as Jim rightly pointed out, fund balance is more than just cash. And what we need to be looking at is, of course, always is our cash, because that's what we use to pay the bills with. It's, it's, it's hard to use inventory and other things of such. But nonetheless, that is a good conversation to have.
Very good conversation.
As to what is that balance, what is that point? Because from a resident taxpayer perspective, you know, they look and see, you know, millions of dollars sitting there, at least on paper. Why is that not in my roads, or why is that not in the services? I'm paying for it, I should be entitled to the benefit of. So clearly, we'll wanna have that, more conversations along those lines, as well as just make sure everybody is fully understanding the financials and what it does or does not mean.
That's right. I can tell you, speaking with other managers, to follow up on what Mike just said, some of my colleagues are trying to grow their fund balances, almost to the point of the concerns we're talking about, with too much money in the bank and not enough going to the roads. It's, it's kind of a, an obsession, so to speak, that you're doing a good job as a manager if you're growing that fund balance. That may have been, you know, in a traditional line of thinking wise, but we're right where we need to be. I just wanna reiterate that. And to go lower is dangerous, to go higher is not prudent, per what Mike just said. We have to stay, stay right where we are, in my opinion, and then carefully keep an equilibrium above and below that point. That's really what I see, as your new manager coming in, when I've reviewed everything, so.
Other questions in regard to Act 51? Will not be the last time we'll see an Act 51 report, I'm sure. And up next, again.
Radio?
Radio, Christopher. Different folder, different file?
We have, over the last six months, been avidly researching options for basically two things. Addressing an upcoming requirement, the date has not been set, but we just went through in 2013, where the FCC required narrowbanding efficiency to be at the 12.5 kilohertz level, and we're anticipating a drop to 6.25 kilohertz sometime soon. It had been talked about in the next year or two. That date is not listed or published right now, but it's coming. So we're trying to be proactive in addressing, avoiding the problem of having to, you know, drop everything and buy radios in the future to be compliant. Calhoun is in the unfortunate situation of having Calhoun is in the unfortunate situation of having antiquated radios that do not meet the requirements of 2013's twelve and a half kilohertz efficiency mandate. The reason for those changes really are a result of how much we use cell phones, and everything is radio-based wireless technology, and so there's just a limited spectrum of bandwidth available. So, they're requiring, with new technology, they're just requiring cleaner transmissions. So, the second big, big issue that we are trying to do is implement a geographic positioning system, a GPS system, Automatic Vehicle Location Program, AVL. This is something, when I came in, that I felt we should have. Other agencies have moved that direction a few years back. And here's something interesting. I'm aware of some county agencies that are spending almost six figures, or just over six figures, on their GPS systems with a cellphone-based system with monthly subscription fees for transmission through cell towers and so forth. We tried to find something that did not have recurring costs. And the technology for radios has gotten so good in recent years, and in fact, we are just now on the cusp of catching the latest improvements in technology with this particular system, that Motorola has made some changes. Where we, when we purchase these radios, we become compliant with future requirements, so we're viewing this as a ten-year investment. And then, secondly, it has GPS integrated in the system. Now, we're not going hog wild, we're not doing the full-blown telemetrics, we call it, we're just trying to get a solid radio system, know where our vehicles are at any given point in time, particularly during storm events. For example, when we had our storm event a few days ago, it would have been extremely valuable for us to know where loaders were to take tree branches down, and with this system, foremen with their iPads, wherever they're at, pulled over along the roadside, can watch their crews in action and know who to send where. Right now, we're guessing. We radio them, "Where are you at?" "Oh, you're over there?" "Okay." And so, then you check with someone, it's kind of sloppy and inefficient. More so, you get breadcrumbs. So, we can do a post-game analysis after storm events. How'd we do? How, why did this area take so long? Let's watch it play out, and you can replay, you know, the trucks in action, and then make some operational changes. As we continue to trim down and be more efficient, we have less and less staff, so every single thing we do requires leveraging technology. So, really, we're trying to make an investment in a system that will, to help us to better monitor our rolling assets. We have our buildings, but we also have our rolling fleet out every day throughout the counties. I think a third supplemental piece, which is important to realize, is that we're partnering in tandem with Calhoun County on this system. So, we're cutting the number of towers, and we're having a more robust system that is digital-based, it has a clearer signal. But it will allow Calhoun trucks to come over here during mutual aid events and help us, and we can communicate directly with them. In the past, there have been problems where we try to help Calhoun chip seal, or they help us chip seal, we can't communicate. And Calhoun's trucks, if they're here, can't even communicate with each other, because they're out of range from their tower. So, when we've gone over to help haul stone and so forth with chip sealing in Calhoun, we have the problem of trucks trying to find where the operation is, or where it's moved, or timing and so forth. This solves all that. There are separate channels, separate frequencies for each county, but they can, they can monitor and jump in as needed by just switching. So, this is true even for our engineering team, as they come over and evaluate projects in either county, they may need to communicate with crew and/or each other as team members, so... Yes?
Chris, a number of questions. First off, has there been coordination with our county IT department on this project or not?
We have talked with, with Don, IT Director, on this, and, is Don here? Nope. The latest information, there was a weakness in the link, we had an IT representative at the table for the last six months, as our purchasing team was working with Calhoun County's team, where the communication, I think, was weak between the IT staffer and the director. Long story short, in the last month, I've talked with our director, and I believe he's gotten what he needs for the software piece. There are literally two radios in the office that receive all the data of location, locational data, and feed it into the server in the system. And last I talked with him a couple of days ago, he felt comfortable with what he sees.
I'm hopeful to see more involvement with our county IT department in these projects, and we talked recently about improvements at the Sheriff's Department as well, and it just makes perfect sense to have our IT department fully involved in this. Chris, I've got a number of other questions, I guess maybe technical, maybe not, is it, what are we currently on, a VHF system, if you know?
We are in an analog system, yes, I believe it is.
Okay, and this new system would be a VHF frequency as well? Or VHF radios?
Might be UHF, actually.
I'd be curious to know that.
Yeah, I can get you that technical data.
Okay, and then, is it a plan to use repeaters with the system, or not?
As needed. We are cutting down from eight towers here in Jackson, I believe, to two. The new system has high enough efficiency, and I have coverage maps I can plop up if we want to look at them, but it's pretty robust coverage in both counties, with only three or four towers between the two. Albion is going to be a major point of transmission between the two.
Well, that's, some of us have seen the presentation from the Sheriff's Department, and they're currently trying to acquire other towers up in the Springport area, I think, but I guess I would be really surprised and disappointed if we're not coordinating with the sheriff for use of towers. I'm, as you know, very familiar with how radios work, and I would be surprised if you're purchasing any radios that will work throughout the whole county without repeaters.
The short answer is, we do have repeaters, I'm sorry. I just meant to say, we're reducing the number of towers required for our system. We have coordinated with the Sheriff's Department on all of this. Lieutenant Ammon has blessed what we're doing, won't interfere with their system. We've had a lot of conversation back and forth.
Well, but has there been any conversation, and maybe I'm going too far with the questions, but any conversation about co-locating equipment, either your equipment on their towers or their equipment on your towers?
We do already do that, and that will continue.
Okay.
Yep. In fact, we're allowing them to install a new tower on the Parma garage. Allowing is probably not the right word, it's, of course, we will, but we met on-site a few months back and gave them a blessing to, we've tried to find the exact spot where it should go on our property without interfering with things, but yes.
Okay, and then, how many frequencies are you talking about using? Because you're talking about a typically repeater for each frequency, correct?
Right.
Probably at least a couple, I'm guessing?
At least a couple. The vendor will handle all of the licensing requirements, which is tricky, because we're so close to Canada, so there's a whole layer of bureaucracy to jump through and hoops to pass through, but I can get you that exact number.
Okay, and then, lastly for me, is there, well, second to the last, any ongoing expenses with a purchase? For instance, ROLCOM is the vendor for the sheriff, and will there be a long-term contract with them to maintain the system? Or is that included in this, or not?
It's, the GPS piece has no recurring costs, other than the normal things you would have with software updates and/or maintenance of that piece. The radio piece is basically the same ongoing cost that we have now, troubleshooting issues, and we'll be under warranty for quite a while, but there will be time-to-time service calls and so forth, but it's very minimal. We tried to minimize, that was one of the goals of the program, is to minimize ongoing and recurring costs.
Okay, and then, really, for the adminis, more for the administrator, I really would like to see more input from our IT department, really, about both of these projects, the sheriff's and here, to know that, you know, we're using, granted, it's separate tax dollars with the Road Commission, but we have to use those wisely and make sure that we're coordinated where we can be.
Thank you. Yeah, we very much agree, we've had those conversations. I know, what is it, Sean? What's the IT?
Yeah, Sean is our IT person.
Has been involved from the get-go.
He's new, he's new, just to be fair.
You know, works for Don. Only more recently has it risen to the level of Don himself, but they understand that we expect coordination amongst all of them, and IT to take lead when it comes to technology. You know, we can be the greatest of this or that, but technology is a separate entity.
Well, do we agree that this is an area that they should be involved in?
Oh, very much, okay, yeah, and they are.
Absolutely. Don was pretty honest, and he just said, "Well, radios are not in my current purview as IT," so that part he wasn't concerned with, and at least today. So, I don't know, Mike, if you want to speak to that issue, but...
Sure.
Don has knowledge in radios. Has knowledge in radios, for sure, but...
But thanks. John?
Yeah. I think I know what a repeater is, but if you could explain, just so that I walk out of here knowing what a repeater is?
Sure, if you have, if you have blank areas that don't have good coverage, you'll, it's basically a booster, essentially, it grabs a signal and then rebroadcasts it. So, you might have a central tower here in Jackson, and it would send it out, and the repeater can receive that, and then resend it out. Without repeaters, you get to the corners of the county, and a nice strong signal here in Jackson would be so faint, it'd be unusable. One of the issues with digital radios over the last decade is they've become more and more common, just like cell phones, if you remember analog phones? You knew when that call was going to drop, because it would slowly fade and pretty much get staticky. Digital is just on or off. You'll just suddenly, it'll cut out and you're done. So, it's nice and clean until that point, so repeaters basically help make sure we have uniform coverage everywhere. And our vendor has supplied us with coverage maps that show that we have in both counties. It even spills over in surrounding counties, of course, just to make sure we have adequate coverage, because topography is your enemy. When you have mountains, trees, we don't have mountains, thankfully, but we do have hills and valleys where you get occlusion from topography.
I guess, just two issues and a clarification. Number one, I also attended the radio informational town hall that was held, and this is not what we heard, that two locations would be adequate, is not what, I walked away from that meeting. So, that does cause me concern, that there seems to be a discrepancy in information there. But number two, for clarification, you're asking for two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to be taken from the capital equipment budget to make this purchase for Jackson County, and that is, although the bid was for both counties together, this is our own separate purchase, and it is not contingent upon, although Calhoun has already approved it, it's not contingent upon them using it as well, the system, if they were to be separated?
There's a short answer and a long answer.
Okay.
To, the first item you mentioned, we had two representatives from our agency at the meeting that you mentioned for the radios. Our understanding so far is that the systems are different in some ways. We have really vetted out the need for additional towers and so forth, and frankly, our towers are there physically. If we ever needed to add additional repeaters, we could do that at a fairly low cost. It doesn't involve re-engineering the whole system, you're just going to boost an area, and you can add the repeater. So, the consultants now are telling us, our vendor's telling us, and they know radio systems very well, that we're good with the reduction in towers, but if we need them, we can always add them. So, we will continue to talk with Sheriff's Department on their initiative and make sure that, that we have a robust system. We don't want to go backwards, for sure. On the issue of timing, and also, Calhoun County's award, they had to move forward. It made a lot of sense for both counties to get a GPS system. As a managing director, it helps me to monitor, to handle customer service complaints. In this age of transparency, it's our goal to actually put this information online, so during storm events, people can see what's been plowed and so forth. So, we have to work with our GIS department and IT and integrate that to get it posted on the website. Calhoun has been doing that for a while, but they have a subscription-based system. They had their old radios, and then they paid separately for a GPS system. So, long story short is, no, we don't have to approve, and I made sure that Calhoun could go forward, so there's two pieces of this. It will cost them, I think, an extra twenty thousand dollars if we don't jump in. The other piece of that is, we're going to lose a ten thousand dollar incentive right now from Motorola. They will take our old radios and give us so many dollars apiece. That has actually already expired here at the end of June, so that, in the good graces of, of, you know, a timely decision imminent, you know, happening here, they've extended that and allowed us to still benefit from that. But if we don't act now, we're going to lose that, so... I should also add that we installed this system in Cass and St. Joe Counties, and it works very well. We modeled it after Berry County, so we're not the very first county doing this. We don't want to necessarily be on that front edge of testing and trying new things always. So, here, other counties have been doing it for, you know, three or four years back, and we've made improvements in our system, actually, based on what they've learned. We actually toured and talked with them about their systems.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Chris, I just want to hear this from you. You've mentioned several times, you've compared Calhoun County's financial situation, their equipment and such, compared to Jackson County, reflecting that Jackson County is in a better position. Obviously, we still have many challenges. I just want to clarify, one of the things when we merged, that was brought up, is that it was made very clear that we, as commissioners, wanted none of our taxpayers' dollars, Act 51 money for Jackson County, et cetera, use of equipment, you name it, we did not want any of that to be part of the operations at Calhoun County. I just want to verify that we're not using any of our resources that could be used here or there.
That's absolutely correct, Carl. We have all kind of, all kinds of checks and balances in place for that. Number one, state law won't allow us to supplement each other, so if we rent even a, you know, a pickup truck, or, you know, something like a survey instrument, all that's getting charged and rented at the governmental rates that are established by Schedule C, it's a database from MDOT. So, and that goes both ways. Even when we send an engineering intern over at their modest wage, that all gets billed back and forth. It's all tracked, it's very transparent. And on this contract, you'll see in the description, so many dollars was Calhoun's piece, so many dollars is Jackson's piece, because we're doing this together, there is a mutual benefit and a savings with the Albion Tower, helping to share with the coverage.
Well, not to belabor the point, but as I've sat here and thought about it, I'm very confident that the old system at the Road Commission was VHF. Could that be, Chris, or you think that is true?
I think that is true, yeah, I just want to verify.
And the new is planned to go to UHF, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. Well, the fact is also that the City of Jackson recently, police department, anyway, went from just the opposite, they went from UHF to VHF to make the system more compatible. And I'm very confident the Road Commission is VHF right now, because there was a time when we'd be able to cross-communicate on the channels, which is not possible with being on different operating bands of UHF and VHF. But I guess I question the wisdom in doing, I mean, I think it made sense, what they did in the city, to go to VHF, so it's all compatible, it's all the same equipment, but here we are now, going the opposite way, going from VHF to UHF. And it just seems like there is a gap in coordination and information, I think, in that. For me, it's a little bit troubling, I guess, right? I have more questions than answers, so...
We may actually still be on VHF. I do apologize. I want to make sure they have the right answer for you, so I can pull up a jump drive that has that data on it while we're talking.
Yeah, you don't, I'm just throwing it out there, you can get back with me later if you want, but I just have continuing concerns, and I'm hopeful that we can get our IT department, even though they may not be up to speed on radio communications, I think it's something they're going to have to be, because, you know, most commissioners don't know a whole lot about radio systems, and we're sitting here making decisions that cost two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And I have got huge concerns about the police end of the system, how much money we're going to be dumping into that. I want to go slow and make sure we're making the right decision, and I want to have the confidence that we have our own IT department weighing in on that. And, you know, granted, it's separate money here with the Road Commission, but it's what we're charged with overseeing. And, you know, if there are reasons why we need to do this on this band with this number of repeaters, that's fine, but UHF is, Adam and I were talking about it, UHF must comply with narrowbanding as well, at least this band that we're in, probably. And if they narrowband again down to six and a quarter, it's going to make it tough to operate with less towers than we have for the county system. We've got, I think, six or so towers on the police end of the system for VHF, so I've got a lot of concerns with it. What time schedule is this moving on? And clarify for me, Calhoun has already gone to this?
Calhoun approved it at their board meetings, there's always a synchronization issue, they approved it at their last board meeting, conditioned on our approval. So, we're hoping to get approval here this month, through the...
So, through the committee process and into the board meeting the week after?
Yes.
I won't guarantee that I'll support it, but I got a lot of questions, so... I won't guarantee that I'll support it, but I got a lot of questions, so...
I can tell you in some, we do have a patch designed in the system with 911, and we've always had a channel where we can monitor and talk with them, so that is also integrated with this new system at both counties, so we can make sure, that was one of the hallmarks of the program, is we have to make sure we have EMS, emergency services, communication. So that piece is there. I will strive to get you an answer yet before we're out of the meeting on the UHF/VHF issue, because I asked that same question a while back, I'm just sorry I don't have it at my fingertips, because we wanted to make sure we had what would be the best for us in the future, so... To Don's credit, I just want to point out that he is indeed very knowledgeable in radios. Some side conversations I've had with him were very helpful, and things to watch out for and so forth. So to be fair and honest, he was involved in the process, or even early on. But, but for me, it's a matter of the same as typically, we have a big project that involves facilities. Rick Shealy has given us a document, or is here before us, saying, "I endorse this, here's why." I'm looking for that same vote of confidence from our IT people, not just to say that they were at the table, but it's a large project that falls most under their purview or their department, I think, so I'm looking for, and especially if he has a huge amount of knowledge, for good participation from him. Thank you.
Other questions? If not, there'll be other opportunities that next meeting to review, discuss. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Uh, other items? None. Public comment? You want to take this?
Peter Boermit, with regard to our roads, wanted to address quickly Kyle's comment that money should be spent on our local roads. I realize the townships have issues, the worst local roads are our city roads, and I don't believe county funds can even be spent on that. On the other issue is the current plans that are coming out of the Michigan Legislature. I want to criticize the Senate plan as cowardly. They have $700 million involved that they haven't specified where it comes from. This is just like their attempt to shove off responsibility onto the voters. Now they're going to shove off responsibility to future legislatures. I just think what's happening up in Lansing is pitiful.
My name is Mike Manville from the Ingo Company Restaurant. Good morning, all. I'm a little disappointed that the SRI isn't on the agenda there to talk about. It greatly affects us, and it greatly affects a lot of people. Our sewer bills have tripled since we've been now assessed with formulas versus actual meters. They have potential to triple from there again, so it would be really devastating for us. And there's a lot of other people affected, too, it's not just us. I see that you have comments up here, maybe you can talk about this at some, some point or something. Commissioner comments? Thank you. Things seem to happen behind the scenes here, I don't, I don't understand, but I guess we'll just wait for the bill in the mail. Unless you'd like to talk about it, I'd really love to hear anything you have to say. Thank you.
Todd Britton, Leonie Township, I heard you talking about the parking out here. I do agree, it is kind of messed up a little bit back behind here. Something maybe in the future, but it'd probably cost a little bit of money. But we've got a former Clark Equipment building out in Leonie Township that has oodles and endless amount of parking out there, that if you ever did decide where it wasn't cost-effective to stay in the city, and if it was more cost-effective to move to Leonie Township, and they have plenty of office spaces there over at the former Clark Equipment building, and that's just something to possibly think about. If it, if it's more cost-effective to be outside the city limits, if they're trying to pinch you out, or, you know, price you out, just something to think about. Thank you.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Alwell?
I'm just curious if there's a time when we're going to take a more proactive approach on the SRI. I know that we've given them plenty of time and room to get the thing worked out themselves, but that doesn't seem to be happening. I'm also curious if there is a process or a requirement for notification of the bond not being paid. It seems like I had looked at that before, and it seems like there is a process where there should be some notification made that Leonie has defaulted on the bond, if the administrator can advise.
I will bring...
You don't need to choose your words so carefully, just spit it out.
Just thinking. The plan is, the 21st, the board will have, if there's not a, some sort of agreement, the board will have to make it, in my mind, I would be asking the board to make a decision on the 21st. The other half, I was thinking it's hard, I forgot what the other half was, what was that question? Oh, reporting. Well, they did report to us. Have we reported anywhere beyond that? No. Can we? We can, but frankly, I don't believe it'd be in the county's best interest to do that. Because the bond's paid, we paid it.
I guess just stating my opinion, I'm not so sure that we shouldn't. There should be some penalty. It again goes back to the fact that Leonie has the obligation to pay the bond. Where they get the revenue from, from the townships, is really up to them at this point, but they defaulted on the bond payment and put us in this position, and I think there should be some penalty for that. We're, I, I think we're doomed to make the decision on what's going to happen and how to resolve this, and, you know, Leonie, by signing the contract, promised us they would make the payments, and it's not a matter of they can't make it, it's that they've chosen not to. And I think there should be some penalty for that. I guess I don't understand what the detriment would be to the county to make notification.
Our bond rating. Our bond rating. If we report to the state that there's a default, remember, the county is just a collection of other entities, all of our townships and everything. If we have alien townships, or cities, or villages, it ultimately has a detrimental effect on us as a county. So we've made the bond payment, I personally don't believe there's, any good will come of notifying the state treasurer of that, making, publicizing that type, this type of event. As it is, it's unfortunate, it even makes the papers at all, not that people don't have a right to know, it's just that people that are looking for relocation or expansion of industry and so forth, things like that, also look at the paper and the politics of a community and want, they want stability. And currently, we don't have stability, let alone infrastructure.
Mike, I, I agree, and that is unfortunate with businesses that would want to come here, or businesses that want to stay here, but the reality is that, that this is something that's been dropped in our laps, and it's very bothersome to me that Leonie has chosen not to pay it, and they forced our hand on this. And I guess I don't understand the correlation, I mean, if you're saying that if a municipality within the county defaults on a bond, then that impacts our bond rating, I guess I'd like to know more about that, how that could be, because we haven't defaulted. But I think the public has a right to know that this has happened.
To the question on, on bond, Dave, the stormwater fee and the issues that the county had with the city on it caused our bond rating to drop a half, half a rank. We dealt with their liability and their inability to have a strong reserve, and it's also offsetting our bond rating at the county. Each time one of our residents, if you would, townships or governmental municipalities has a problem, it gets counted against us as a liability, as a problem that we may have to step in and fix. So yes, it does impact our bond rating every time, which in turn affects school districts and affects other issuances, life ways, and those people who are getting ready to go out for bonds. So if we can show a little restraint on taking action publicly that's within the law, then I think we should do it. It's part of, do you, I hate to use this analogy with the press sitting here, when your children misbehave with their finances, do you go out and make it public knowledge that they had this problem? Or do you try to solve it as best you possibly can and let them come to you with a resolution?
I, I think that cuts two ways, and I think there's long-term consequences. Granted, if it impacts our bond rating, that's a negative financial thing, but, but you can't really keep it under this roof and expect that in the future, it's not going to happen again if there hasn't been a consequence for it. So I, you know, I'm throwing it out there for discussion, I'm not saying we should do this, I'm saying that we need to talk about it, and I, I think it has potential and it should be talked about.
I'll slap you. I continue to struggle with this, and I try, and again, I, I try to look at this in an objective way, and as I've said before, very much try to not to make this political or otherwise, doing what's in the best interest of everybody is important here. I do have a concern that Leonie Township continues to be brought up in this matter. And again, here we go again, talking about the same old things over and over again. And the reality is this, again, we made it very clear to Leonie Township, before we were going to take any action on the contract and the judge's ruling, they needed to default first. So they defaulted, let's make this very clear, everybody, they defaulted because they needed to default so that we could be where we're at now. Do we want to be here? No. But we were put in this position because the judge put us in this position, and the judge put us in a position of, of making a decision if those townships can't get together. I still hope at least three can get together, and then if we have to, we'll do what we can with the other one. If none of them want to get together, the reality is there will be consequences. So the ultimate way there's going to be consequences if they can't work it out. So that part's going to be taken care of. And to think that we should do anything further at this point, to me, is just, it's just not responsible. The responsible thing to do is to follow through with what we said. Leonie, we can then take action based on the contract and based on the judge's ruling, if you default first, then we will do something. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing anything. So again, all they did was follow our lead.
That's, that's pretty much what I was going to say, it was my understanding that Leonie was advised to default so that it would be turned over to the county to be able to help make a decision. I know myself personally, I'm, I'm, I hope that the townships can come to an agreement, and to the gentleman who's the owner of the restaurant, I feel like those questions and concerns that you have should be directed towards the four townships, because it's not going to benefit anybody for us to have to make the agreement, four to four townships.
For clarification, Commissioner Rice, you stated that the judge put us in this position? I, I would feel very confident in saying that the four townships that signed that contract and the Board of Commissioners at the time put us in that position, in that that was the contract that was signed.
I don't disagree with that, but again, like I said, if Judge LaFlemme had done his job and actually made a judgment, we wouldn't be here either.
Any additional comments? Commissioner comments?
I got a fun one here. I sent all the commissioners, I sent it to Mike and Adam. Leonie Township is having its second annual Cruisin' in the Park, and John Plachek is very mad at me because we stole, oh, we, we stole Mr. Tommy Dog from him, so he's going to be there as well. So if you want a good time, a lot of great music, all that kind of stuff, again, July 26th. Thanks.
Other commissioner comments? Seeing here none, moving on. At this time, we'd like to go into closed session in accordance with MCL 15.268 for a personal matter to be discussed, and frankly, this is my evaluation, and it is at my request, for the record.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair? You're welcome. Commissioner Lightner? Commissioner Walls? Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Plachek?
Yes.
Commissioner Alwell?
Yes.
I don't anticipate us returning with anything after this.